Is that structure in Rome that, some of you may have been there, I don't know if you've done much traveling, that's called the Colosseum. That really is not the name of the building when it was built. It's called Flavius Amphitheater, but it's what we know as the Colosseum. And you know, some things change and some things don't. Last Sunday, here in our own country, there was this big, huge stadium like a Colosseum, thousands and thousands of people piled in there. They put some men down on the field who were gonna do combat, butt heads with each other, and the people up the stands were gonna be going, "Kill 'em, kill 'em." Something, and the worse it got, you know, how some people are about a football game, the harder they hit and the more of them they carry out on the stretcher, the better they like it. So, some things about this world haven't changed that much over time. This, of course, is a scene, now this was not the place where that happened in Peter's Day. This was built sometime after Peter's Day and time, but it was a place where that happened in the city of Rome, that the Christians and others, you know, sometimes the ones they'd captured in war and whatever would be brought there to be part of the spectacle, you know? The wild animals and the gladiator stuff happened in this, in this structure, very much like a stadium. If you go there, you'll see the sections are numbered so that you know where your seat is, just like in a stadium today or, you know, an arena of some kind. All the sections and seats were numbered, so you knew where you were. But it's, it's the kind of thing that began in Peter's time for the Christians, that kind of persecution. Now, as we said, what, what was going on in Peter's time was pretty much there in the city of Rome and around there. It wasn't out in all of these other places. That would come later, but not in his time. There's really three ways in which Christians experienced persecution during that first century, the first, beginning of the Christian movement. From the time of Jesus, in the early part of the first century, he was about 30 years old, Luke tells us, when he began his ministry, Jesus, he was about 30. They really don't have precise dates in there, you know? And his ministry apparently extended about three years until he was crucified, so he was crucified when he was about 33, which would have put it around 30, 31 AD when that happened. Well, then the early church began out of that early group of disciples of Jesus there in the city of Jerusalem, and they began experiencing opposition and persecution from the Jewish establishment. But the Romans really didn't care that much about them. They didn't take note of them. They were such a small group. Started out with just a group of, we think, no more than 30 to 40, meeting in an upper room in the city of Jerusalem after the crucifixion and resurrection and Jesus ascended there in the first chapter of Acts. And it wasn't the Romans initially. They suffered from the Jewish religious and political establishment, the Sanhedrin, that's where Peter was hauled in, you know, and he and John told, they couldn't preach in the name of Jesus anymore. People were imprisoned and other things. Really, from the time of Jesus up until the 60s that we're talking about with this letter, Christians had not experienced persecution in any widespread sense at all. Occasionally, just here and there, little local problems they experienced. Like we mentioned, you know, Paul was in prison. He spent a night in jail in Philippi, you remember that story, and the earthquake and everything. He had been put on trial in Corinth at one point, and the Roman official who was conducting the trial said, "It's nothing. This is an internal matter with you Jewish people. Y'all settle at yourselves, nothing to this." Meaning, there's no issue here under Roman law or whatever. So, really, the Roman government didn't care. They didn't do anything about these Christians until you get to this point in the city of Rome when Nero really used the Christians as a scapegoat for the big fire that had destroyed so much of the city. And then, that was pretty much confined right there. It didn't spread out from Rome or that, the region right around Rome. It didn't spread out from there, really. Until you get to the end of the first century with the Roman Emperor Domitian, and he's the one who first really insisted that everybody had to worship the emperor as divine, as a god. And it was required of everyone to worship the emperor and to bow down and repeat, "Caesar is Lord." Well, the Christians couldn't do that. They would only make a confession, "Jesus is Lord." And so, when they would not participate in that, what we call the imperial cult, the worship of the emperor, they, along with others, but that's when the widespread persecution, because Domitian as emperor insisted that all of his subjects do this, everywhere. And so, then you began to see persecution that's widespread in many other parts of the empire besides the city of Rome. And then that continued off and on, sometimes more severe than others, until the early 300 AD, when the condition of the Christians changed because the emperor was converted. The ruler at that time was converted to Christianity and declared that this religion is now my religion, and so that completely changed the situation of Christianity in the Roman Empire. And in fact, within a matter of a few short years, Christianity became the official religion, which I'm not sure that was a good thing, really. You get put in the position of power and privilege, sometimes that has more negative effects than it does positive effect on, on the movement. Most historians of the church or the Christian movement in history will agree that the church has done much better in terms of its internal strength, even its growth, when it was under persecution than it does when it's in a position of privilege. And there may be a little something to that to us here in this country. We were in such a position of privilege for so long, really. Favored by everybody in society. Maybe we got a little weak, a little too dependent upon our privileged position in society and not on the power of God's spirit working within us and depend on that. I don't know, but there's some things to think about there. Well, in the letter, we come now to our section, beginning in chapter 2, verse 11. We finished up with chapters one and the first part of two, during the worship time, session we labeled "becoming serious." He calls upon them to become serious Christians, holy people of God, to truly be that. Starting in chapter 2, verse 11, chosen the word for this submission. Submission, submission sounds like a word that is a weak response. Well, we're just submit to whoever and it sounds like we're gonna become the punching bag here and just let them beat up on us and do whatever they want to. But the submission really refers to submitting to God. Submit your lives to God and to being, you know, the holy people of God. Now, what he's gonna talk about, what does that look like? It looks like people who submit their lives to God and who seek to serve Him, to live in Christian relationships in every area of their lives, in their families, in the society, you know, their witness, in everything, living, submitted to God's kingship, lordship, ownership of them. Some part of that is gonna be submitting to the governmental authorities, but not submitting in the sense that I accept and agree with everything, but submitting in the sense that these people are the ones who are in charge. I can't do anything about it. We're not holding elections, you know, to see who's the emperor. We're not gonna get to go vote on who and what party may be in control of the Congress or the state legislature, whatever. The world is what it is. Submitting to God defines how I'm gonna live in this world. So, submission, but think of that as submission to God and what that means for us and how we live out our lives. Beginning in chapter 11, this is a section that goes into chapter 3, and he is going to address the different ones who are part of a Christian household, as the basic unit, household. But it included, right off the bat, he addresses all, everyone. But then he's gonna move to a section on slaves, and we'll talk about that a little more when we get there. Starting in verse, in chapter 2, verse 11, notice that he says, "Beloved, I urge you as aliens and exiles to abstain from the desires of the flesh that wage war against the soul." Aliens and exiles is how he characterizes. Now, in what sense? Aliens and exiles in the world. That is, oh, you know the little song, "This world is not my home. I'm just a passing through. My treasure is laid up somewhere beyond the blue. The angels beckon me from heaven's open door, and I just can't feel at home in this world anymore." Well, that's sort of the idea that's right there. We are aliens and exiles in the sense that this world is not our final home, but more than that, it is, we are not able to make our home in the world and the values that the world lives by day by day. He says, "Abstain from the desires of the flesh that wage war against the soul." There's something about this world and its way of doing things that we can never be comfortable, we can never feel in that sense at home in, in this world. He goes on, "Conduct yourselves honorably among the Gentiles," meaning the Roman world out there, the Roman Empire, "so that though they malign you as evil doers," they call you the bad people, because you don't fit in their society. "Though they malign you as evil doers, they may see your honorable deeds and glorify God when he comes to judge. They may see in you someone who lives a good and honorable life." Now, he's gonna go on in part of this and talk about what that looks like. Verse 13, for example. "For the Lord's sake," and notice the motivation, "for the Lord's sake, accept the authority of every human institution, whether of the emperor as supreme or of governors as sent by him to punish those who do wrong and to praise those who do right." The motivation is for the Lord's sake. I do what? I try to be a good, law-abiding citizen. I try to live a life in which nobody would have a reason to question my conduct. Being a Christian doesn't give you license to violate the laws. It would be a rare case when we as Christians would say, "I cannot do what the law tells me to do." Now, there may be occasions, but it's not very often that I'm gonna be asked to do that. So, he's, he's saying, "As a matter of Christian witness, we try to the best that we can to be a good citizen, a contributing citizen, a law-abiding person. I try to be a good influence and a good presence in society." Then, continuing with the purpose of this, why? What's your motivation? Verse 15, "For it is God's will that by doing right you should silence the ignorance of the foolish." What's your answer for those who are so critical of you or who label you as wrongdoers? What's your answer? My answer is to live the good, the best life I can, to live as someone who is doing right in the world. And you know, really, the only answer you can give to some people is by your good deeds. There's nothing else. You can talk to them till you're blue in the face, you're not gonna convince them of anything, but if you'll live consistently, if you'll live in a dedicated way to the, to the Christ that we believe, you answer them in that way. "As servants of God, live as free people, yet do not use your freedom as a pretext for evil. Honor everyone. Love the family of believers. Fear God. Honor the emperor." There's a kind of hierarchy in those verses, you see? Love each other. Fear God, we talked about that earlier. What is fear of God? That's reverence and awe and acknowledgement of who God is. It's not terror, it's honoring God, fearing God that way. Honor the emperor, honor the office. You've said this before, I've said it before, I think every one of us has said it before. Again, not making a political statement, 'cause, you know, different people say it about every administration there ever was. It doesn't matter, in one sense, it doesn't matter who the president is or what I think of the president. There's a respect due to the office, a respect due to the position, and there's a certain way in which we wanna respect the office of president because of what it means in our system and in our country and even in the world, without saying the person is wonderful and is, you know, doing a wonderful, godly thing in every way. No, we don't, we, I mean, we've said that about very few, if any, I don't know. But we still say you should respect the office of president. Certain amount of honor is due to that office. So, here he's saying, "Honor the emperor." Who's the emperor? Who's the emperor right here he's talking about? Nero. The emperor is Nero. What's Nero doing? He's killing us. He's killing Christians. But he's the emperor. He represents the rule of some kind of law, the order, you could say, in society. I think it's kinda like Paul over, you know, in Romans, chapter 13, where he talks about you, you know, there are people who are put over you to rule, to punish the evil doers, they bear the sword, he uses those kind of phrases. What is that about? It's, it's not respect for that person necessarily, as a person. It is respect for the rule of law and the respect for order and a respect for a system that establishes order in society where we can live together. We should, but if someone wants to break the law and someone wants to upset our order of things, then they should be dealt with through, you know, courts and criminal justice system. Respect the system of laws and respect the order that enables us to live together in society. But that's, there it is. Honor the emperor, who is Nero, who is the reason why we're suffering. But make what you will of that. Now, in verse 18, he turns his attention to specific individuals within society and within, particularly within a Christian household, who's here that we're living together with day by day. We're in this set of relationships that are really the biggest part of our lives every day. One of them is slaves. Now, there are estimates that in the Roman Empire in the first century, it may have been over half of the people living within the Roman Empire were slaves. It was a huge number of people in, in basically the workforce, the people who did the labor anyway. Almost all of them were slaves. So, it's a large number of people. Secondly, this is a group of people who had responded quickly and readily to the gospel. Now, you can understand that. In this life, I'm a slave. This fellow owns me. He, he runs my life. He can tell me everything I'm supposed to do every minute of the day, and I have virtually no recourse of any kind. But the gospel says what? Every man, every person is free in Christ. And what that means, of course, is free to have this relationship with God and to know the love of God through Jesus Christ, and in that salvation, to have God's presence with me now and the promise of my eternity. You can see how that message reached into the slave population, because it promised them that ultimately there was something better, something beyond this life and beyond what for many of them was a very menial kind of existence. It is not, nothing in the New Testament is really saying slavery was a good thing. Slavery was a wonderful system that worked well. Nothing in the New Testament says that, but it addresses the fact that this is a huge part of Roman society and Roman, the Roman world, and the fact that there were large numbers of them who were coming into the churches because they were responding to the gospel. So, to the slaves, what does he say? What is submission to God for a slave? Well, he describes through there, you know, you do your work, you do it well, you do it, you work hard, you work well, even when the master's mistreating you, you keep doing your best at whatever task you're assigned, and you work hard and you work well, because that's part of your testimony, part of your statement about who you are as a Christian, as one of God's people. Verse 29 down there, "If you endure when you are beaten or for doing wrong," what credit is that? "If you endure when you do right and suffer for it, you have God's approval." God is looking down on you and saying, "Well done. You have done your best in very difficult situation. You do not lash out, you do not react in a violent or physical manner." The presence of slaves was just something that they had in the Christian. You know, you have a situation where the slave and the owner could both be members in the same church. Well, that condition happened in this country, you know, back in the days of slavery in this country, that, that could be the same. You go to many of the old churches in the old south, and there's a balcony and there's a floor, and you know, the balcony's where the, where the slaves would come, come to church. And down on the floor would be where the white people would sit, and, and they'd come to the same church and hear the same message, but they maintain this sort of rigid separation. That was the way it was when I was growing up in the little theater in my hometown, little movie theater. The floor was where the white people sat, balcony's where all the black people sat. And there was certainly no law that made it that way. That was just society that imposed this. And, you know, growing up in a little, little small town in East Texas, we didn't really question that. I mean, it just wasn't something that was in our minds to say, "Well, this is terrible, this is wrong, and, you know, we're not gonna do it." We just didn't have that sensitivity growing up in a situation like that, that this was a horrible wrong, which it was to say, "We're gonna segregate people," you know, like that. First time I took Jimmy to the movie in my little hometown, she wanted to sit in the balcony. That's where she always sat in the big city of Waco, where she grew up when they went to the movie, but that's sort of what happened in my little hometown. She wanted to go sit in the balcony, 'cause that's what she liked to sit. Trying to tell her, "No, we can't do that. We can't do that." "Why not?" "Well, we just can't do that. It's not allowed." "What do you mean, you can't?" That was it. That was the way it was. Well, in the early church, they had the same problem of how do we mix these two, for them, classes of people? It wasn't racial or ethnic, it was status or your situation in society. Remember the little letter of Philemon that Paul wrote? It's about relationships between an owner and a slave who are both members in the same church, and Paul knows them both. And he's writing to them to try to sort out these relationships. How do we exist together in the same church as fellow members and fellow believers, but one man owns the other one as his property? So, Paul's, Peter here is dealing with that, that issue. Present in the church are slaves, maybe lots of them, as well as those who own them. And he's talking there about if you suffer, you, but you keep doing right, you do your, the best you can under this system, you have God's approval. And then verse 21, "For to this you have been called," not called to be slaves, but called to, to live life the way that God would have you live, to live as a true believer in the world. You've been called to do that regardless of your station. So, verse 21, "To this you have been called, because Christ also suffered for you, leaving you example that you should follow in his steps." Now, there, he kind of ennobles what they're doing. For you to do your best in the face of the kind of suffering that is imposed on you is like the example of Christ who suffered in the face of terrible opposition. Verse 23, "He was abused; he did not return abuse. He suffered; he did not threaten. He entrusted himself to the one who judges justly. He himself bore our sins in his body on the cross, so that, free from sin, we might live for righteousness. By his wounds you have been healed. For you were going astray like sheep, but now you have returned to the shepherd and guardian of your souls. You have received salvation through Jesus Christ, and so live out his example in your life." Chapter 3, he turns to another group in the church, so common in the church and in the Christian household, the wives. Wives in the same way. Now, what does he mean by that? We're talking about submission to Christ. To the slaves, he has said, "In your submission to Christ, do the best you can in your situation, work hard, do a good job, as if you were serving Christ." Wives in the same way, referring to that same motivation. You have now submitted your life to Christ. So, in the world in which we live, accept the authority of your husband, so that even if some of them do not obey the word, they may be won over without a word by the wife's conduct. He's saying you can, you can have a tremendous influence on your husband by the way you relate to him, and this is something Christ would expect you to do, particularly in the situation where you may have a husband who's not a believer. If you read down from 2, 3, 4, you may have some verses that challenge you. Talks about women and their styles and their appearances and the way they present themselves. Some of that stuff we see among Christian women today, you know? I mean, style your hair. None of you wanna walk around just... I know if you want to walk around, just, you know, I mean, you may wish you could. Just wash it and let it go, you know? That'd be so much easier. But that's not the way, you know? Styling hair, wearing jewelry, buying clothing. Really, it's a warning against materialism, is what it is. It's a warning against materialism and too much of a concern or even it could approach worship of the material and physical things. You have to have the latest fashion that comes from wherever, you know, New York or Dallas or whatever. And you, and having those things is the most important thing in your life. Making sure that I'm with it in every way. I'm watching all of the latest trends and all. It's, it's really a warning against materialism or a worship of physical, material things. That does not, what Peter's saying, that doesn't really present the kind of witness that we want to present. Now, where do you draw the line? I don't know. That's a shifting, changing line. We don't really know where to draw that line. I mean, you think about guys that have to have, you know, the latest athletic shoes, you know? The one that's got the right name of the professional athlete on it. And, you know, 150 bucks. Well, who cares? For one pair of shoes? But, you know, that's the world that, it's, it's the same thing. We can, we can get caught up in that, that is really the world. To focus on those things as if they are ultimate. I mean, the most important thing in my life is owning that particular pair of shoes or having that particular type of clothing or having that, you know, whatever. My old guys over in Plainview, you gotta have, you know, the next time a new golf driver comes out, they gotta have one. And no matter that you got a dozen good ones, but there's a new one and this one is the latest. So I gotta have it. Or maybe it's a handbag or something, though. I gotta have it. Peter says, "Look, let's, let's focus upon the true value of things." And he talks about this as a way in which women can be witnessing in their lives and in their world. Seven, verse seven, husbands, notice, you see the same phrase? Look at chapter three, verse one. Wives in the same way, seven, husbands in the same way. What does he mean? Submission. Husbands as submitted to God. Because you are submitted to God, because you are seeking to follow God, do this. Show consideration for your wives in your life together. Paying atten, paying honor to the woman as the weaker sex, since they too are also heirs of the gracious gift of life, so that nothing may hinder your prayers. There is a way in which we as Christian men should treat women. And that's important. God makes it important. The way that we relate to women, and it says the weaker sex. Didn't get a rise out of anyone over that. It's not my experience necessarily that that's true, but, but he's talking about the, really, what is true then, what still is true in many ways is the, obviously, the ability of men to impose themselves on women and to coerce them, to be able to manipulate and use and abuse women in the way that men do. And that, you know, this is not in any way part of being a Christian man. Maybe one of the first and most important ways that we demonstrate the true faith as men is in relationships to women and how we, how we treat them, how we relate to them. You just can't believe some of the things that you read about and hear about, see, you know, going on, but we know it's true. I mean, we know it's there. So, in the same way, because you are a Christian, you show the kind of respect and honor. And notice, "So that nothing may hinder your prayers." What does he say? It affects your relationship with God. It's an issue between you and God, how you are between you and your wife and you and women that you live with, work with, whatever. God takes issue with you over how you conduct yourself. Now, boy, that's a contemporary word if there ever was one in our, in our society today. All right. So submitting to God defines how we live in all of our relationships. You notice there he addresses all, everyone, everyone who's in the church, regardless of your status in society, regardless of your gender, regardless of what place you occupy in the church. I'm talking to all of you when he opens up. Then he goes to slaves, big part of the church, big part of the Christian households. Wives, husbands. There is a way in which each of you in your station in life, so to speak, can be a Christian witness. There is something about being a Christian that defines every bit of us, every part of our lives, or should. We can't wall off different parts of our lives and say, "Well, you know, I'm, Christ rules my life. He is my Lord and Savior in these ways." But it doesn't touch this part of my life over here. There's nowhere in the Bible that we can get away with that. Nowhere in the Bible that we're allowed to take that approach. To belong to Him, to be the holy people of God defines who we are, what we are, how we live in every area of life. And that's, that's an important part of this letter from beginning to end. Whatever is going on out there in the world does not define who we are as God's people. We are defined, we are determined by our relationship with God through Jesus Christ. That decides for us who we are, what we will do. And whatever's going on out there, good or bad, cannot be the thing that defines us. Now, as we move on into the next section, he begins to address specifically the issue of suffering that is so much a part of their lives. It has come to be the world in which they live, persecution, opposition. But here, beginning in chapter three, verse eight, the word suffering is referring to the fact that we are living as God's good people in the world and we are going to suffer in some way, to some degree. It is not something that we should see as foreign to us. He will say just as that, just as much. And divide it up so we can kind of get a handle on it in these three parts. Suffering for doing good. In chapter three, verse eight, he returns to the idea of all. And verse eight there in chapter three, you say, you see, finally, all of you. Once again addressing everyone in the church and the household. Have unity of spirit, sympathy, love for one another, a tender heart, an humble mind. Do not repay evil for evil or abuse for abuse, but on the contrary, repay with a blessing. It is for this that you were called, that you might inherit a blessing. He's making the point that once again, to all of us, there is a way that we are to live in the world, even though we are suffering, even though we may be victims of some kind of persecution, abuse, some trouble that comes upon us from someone else. There's a way that we respond to that and it is not by giving it back in the same fashion that we receive. We live in a world that, that, you know, the old thing, you're not even until you're one up, you know, that kind of thing. That's the world we live in. You know, if you do to me, I do it to you. And only I try to do it to you worse than you did it to me. But that's the world. That's not the church. That's not the people of God. That's the world. And that's exactly what he's saying here. If you suffer because you are a Christian, because you're trying to do what is good, there's a way that we respond to that. There's a way that we try to live in response to that. And he kind of makes a point down through here that if you're gonna suffer, why not suffer for what is good? If you're gonna suffer, suffer for the right reasons. Not as someone who, you know, is a victim or some, or who claims to be victim. You know, there's this thing about victimhood or victimization where many people claim to be victims who are really not. And they're just using that in some way. He's talking about how it is when we suffer because we are trying to do good in the world. We're trying to be good people. We're trying to do what is right. Verse 14, "Even if you do suffer for doing what is right, you are blessed. Do not fear what they fear and do not be intimidated, but in your hearts sanctify Christ as Lord." In the face of suffering and abuse, there's a way that Christians should respond. And it's not in the way that the world would respond. Second part is about living for God in the world in which we suffer. Chapter four, verse one, "Since therefore Christ suffered in the flesh, arm yourselves also with the same intention." That is, realize that this is something that it may be part of your life as a Christian. Don't act as if this is something that should not ever happen to you because you're a Christian. You know people who think that if you become a Christian, if you give your life wholly to God, life ought to just smooth out in front of you. You know, I live in Plainview. There's some people that think if you're gonna be, if you do, if you become a Christian, you give your life to God, life ought to just smooth out like that interstate highway over there. One long, smooth glide up to heaven. But life is not like driving the interstate highway. It's drive, it's like driving around neighborhoods in Plainview. Where if you're not careful, you're gonna hit something that'll tear the bottom of your car out. There's enough chug holes and dips and all of that. Boom, boom, boom. And that's the way life is. We hit a lot of places where it's a loud boom and something bad's happened. Life is not like a long, smooth ride. So what he's saying is, "Arm yourselves with this knowledge, this attitude. Christ suffered in the flesh here in the world. That's gonna happen with us too." Jesus had warned his disciples, didn't he? "In the world, you will have tribulation." But remember, I have overcome the world. Okay, let's keep moving. In that section, he's talking about how we live for God because we are, no, we are, we are Christ and because we want to be His and be like Him. And the threats and the difficulties that we encounter sometimes may cause Christians to turn on each other. And toward the end of that section, one through 11, verse eight, "Above all, maintain constant love for one another, for love covers a multitude of sins." What does he mean by that? If I love other people, I automatically get forgiveness? I think he's talking about relationships. If I truly, genuinely love you and you love me, then we're going to understand that times we don't always act like we should. But in love, we maintain a close relationship, even when I'm not perfect or you're not perfect. Certainly has a lot to say in marriage, does it? Love covers a multitude of sins. When we don't act like we should toward one another, we still know, it's not, it doesn't change or it doesn't question the fact that we love each other in a, in a deep way that we do. And so, hey, I know, you know, I'm not always gonna act like I should or you're not always gonna act like you should. But love covers that kind of thing, or should. At least in our lives as Christians, love covers. It can be true in friendships. It can be true in any relationship. We love as we should, as Christ loved. That covers the things that may not be, when, when something happens that, that's not right.